Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 3rd, 2022, Warsester Township Board of Supervisors reorganization meeting. Would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? My name is Rick DeLolo. I'm the chairman of the board. To my left is Lou Betts, who's our vice chair. To my right is Steve Quigley, who's our third member. And on the side table is Tommy Ryan, who is our township manager. First and foremost, does anybody have any informational items for the board tonight?
This evening's meeting is being video recorded for rebroadcast.
Thank you, Tommy. First up, we have public comment. Does anybody have any public comment for the board this evening? We do ask that you limit your public comment to five minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to the official action items. So I don't know if anybody in the audience has attended a reorganization meeting before or not. I know some have. It's an interesting process, but there's a lot of motions and seconds. And we just sort of worked through, there's a lot of things we need to do officially to start the new year, and a lot of unofficial things that we wind up doing in this meeting. But invariably, it's a little choppy from time to time because there's a lot of discussion on different topics. But we'll work through it as quickly and as reasonably as we can. It's your local government at work at its best and worst, I would say. So first official action item that we need to do is an appointment of a temporary chair.
I nominate Rick DeLolo as temporary chair.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we need to appoint a temporary secretary.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Stacy Crandall as our temporary secretary.
Yeah, the temporary secretary.
No, I can't make a motion now.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Tommy Ryan as our temporary secretary.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion passes, two to one. Next up, we need to appoint a chair for the Board of Supervisors for 2022.
I nominate Lou Betts.
I nominate Rick DeLolo. I knew Steve would do this, though. Actually, Steve, it might be your turn. You've got 14 years here. I think you-
You can make a joke, and I could say, "I nominate Steve Quigley," and we could flip a coin.
Why would we do that? You've never been chair. Maybe it's your turn.
I'll withdraw my nomination, and I'll back Mr. DeLolo. I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up is a motion to appoint the vice chair for the Board of Supervisors for 2022.
I'll nominate Mr. Betts.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have what are defined as official appointments. I'm going to handle this a couple of ways. There's, I'm going to start with you guys. Ultimately, what we've tried to do in past years, as best we can, is handle official appointments as a bundle. And ultimately, there is from A through double B. So that's 28, as opposed to handling 28 individual appointments. But I will ask if anybody has any issues, concerns, comments regarding any of the 28 roles. There's a mix of official items from top to bottom. Let's start there first. If we can take it as a slate, great. If not, we'll break it up as we need to.
You need to break it up.
Okay, how would you like, what?
I guess we're starting today, right?
Correct. But well, I mean, anywhere on the slate, Lou, I guess the question is, anywhere on the slate, if there are concerns across the slate? If we can unwrap those, we will. That might be the easiest way to do that. Then I'll ask Steve if he has any adjustments he wants to make, and we'll see where we're at.
Want to go first, Steve?
Is Mr. Betts suggesting we go item by item?
I'll go if you want. If you're not, that's fine. Yeah, it's been an exciting year.
I have no problem. I'm just going to go one by one.
Go ahead. It's your turn. The idea is try to bundle what we can, you know? And if there's a couple that we need to unwrap, I don't, ultimately, the more we can bundle, the better. But if there are specific concerns, then certainly we can look to unwrap those, I guess is what my thinking was, Steve. But I'd like to avoid 28 individual motions if I can. That always makes it a little easier. So if there's things to unwrap, I wanted to get consensus from the two of you and kind of do that as efficiently as we can.
I think there's some issues. So I just don't know how to, at what point we address the issues or single them out.
Okay. Lou, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'll go, because apparently nobody wants to do anything. All right, it's been an exciting year. And again, I've had some challenges this year. And I'm going to ask if we do not approve Township Manager Tommy Ryan for any of these as secretary, manager, assistant manager, right-to-know officer, zoning officer. And I do have concern with fire marshal Dave Cornish. I don't, I need a fire marshal to the residents that meet the state guidelines. So there's my, other than that, everything else seems to be in play. Our treasurer, Nicole, Stacy, our public works director at this point, and all the other things. So that's my, Steve, I'll let you take it from there.
Is Mr. Betts not endorsing the current fire marshal?
That is the correct statement.
Okay, well, I support our fire marshal fully and completely. And ultimately also, I respect your opinion on that, Lou, but ultimately, we're not required. We've looked into it. We're, we don't have any state guideline that we're required to follow regarding our appointment of a fire marshal. He needs to meet the requirements of our township specifically, and I'm extremely confident and comfortable in our fire marshal. But I respect that if we need to ultimately unwrap that one piece, then-
Can that be challenged anytime during the year, or is that a one-year appointment?
I mean, you can ultimately raise an issue. I mean, I don't, we're making an appointment tonight, but ultimately, I don't know the answer to that question, if ultimately, there's a question that arises during the year on that particular role.
I have my own version of that, so I'll let that go. You guys do that.
I'm not sure what you mean there, Lou.
Well, I believe that, I believe the residents deserve certain qualifications and state issues guidelines, and there's nothing against Dave Cornish. I just believe that he needs either the proper training to follow the state guidelines. That's, you know, I think it's only proper to do that. Now, you can, you state, "We don't have to do that," and that's okay. I don't agree. And I'll leave it at that. I mean, I'll let Steve interject a little opinion on that.
Okay. Steve, do you feel that we need to unwrap that particular item? I mean, we can, if you, I mean, there's-
We'll carve those two out that Lou had mentioned.
Well, I think you'd wind up carving out ultimately two items. You'd carve, we can carve out, and I, we can carve out the township manager items and handle that as a motion. We can carve out the fire marshal and handle that as a motion, and then handle the other, what would be 22, I guess, the remaining items, and take them all as a single motion.
So A and M will carve out. I'll make a motion to-
Well, but it wouldn't just be A and M. So you, there'd be A, E, I, J, and K, and Y are associated specifically to the township manager, and then M is the fire marshal.
So I guess the other way to do it, Rick, is I make a motion to accept the official appointments from A through BB, which are the 21 appointments.
We can do that as well. And if you make that motion, I will second that motion to accept official appointments A through BB. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Yes.
Motion passes, two to one. Okay, moving forward. Next, we have what are called volunteer appointments and standing positions. We do typically handle these individually. It's a little bit easier sometimes to do that. Let me start. I'll start, and we'll work through these one at a time. So the first is what's called the vacancy board chair. That's a one-year term. It's an interesting role. It's one that we've actually never used in the history of the township that I can recall. But ultimately, it's an appointment that we, Gordon Todd was for about a century in the role, and then we, no offense to Gordon, then a couple of years ago, we appointed Bob. I actually would like to nominate Lee Koch, who's on our planning commission today, has been for a few years. It's a position we hope we never use, you know, frankly. It's, it falls in, there's certain scenarios and conditions where the vacancy chair role will come into play. And I think it's one that, you know, every couple of years is probably a good idea to maybe to move it to somebody else. But it's, again, it's a role we hope we don't need. But I will make a motion that we appoint Lee Koch to the vacancy board chair. Is there anyone who will second that? Okay, there is no second, I think, or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jim Mollick for the position.
I still believe Bobby Antorn is our go-to guy for this vacancy board.
I guess we need a vacancy chair to settle the problem.
All right, you know what, Steve? I will second, I can't believe I'm going to say this, I'm going to second Jim Mollick for vacancy board chair. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion passes, two to one. Next up is the North Penn Water Authority. First, I'm going to take a minute, he's not here tonight, at least I don't think he's here, is I'm going to say thank you to Paul Ziegler, who served in this role for quite a while, and certainly, you know, we always often talk about these being thankless roles, and that's certainly one of the thankless roles that we have. But ultimately, I don't have a strong opinion on this particular one. Steve, I'm going to let you start. If you have anybody in particular, there are a couple of folks that have expressed interest, but if you have someone who isn't on our list, you certainly can add them as well. But is there anybody that you would like to nominate for this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate for the North Penn Water Authority Board Mark Trevetti.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Yes. Hold on. Come to, if you do me a favor, come all the way up. Sign in, tell us who you are for the video recording, and I just ask you to pull the mic close to yourself. He's rescinded his interest, is I think what he has done. Am I understanding that correct, Mark? Okay. So we, we're going to-
Make a motion?
I'm just, I just want to make sure we unwrap the motion. Do we have to? There's no vote on the, that's fair. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we handled the mechanics of that correctly. So, Mark, I appreciate you actually jumping up and saying, before we got too far in front of that, so thank you for that. I will then make a motion to appoint Art Buster to the North Penn Water Authority. Now, Art, you realize the five-year term, so they're good enough?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up is our zoning hearing board, three-year term, which will expire on 12/31/24. And John Deloro has served in that role for a while. I'm certainly, personally, I'm comfortable with John, but I'll entertain, obviously, any input and feedback you guys have regarding that particular role.
Mr. Chairman, I think based on the ongoing litigation we have, I think it's important to keep the players in place, to understand what's been happening for the past couple of years. So I'll make the motion to reappoint John Deloro to that position.
I'll agree with John. I believe he's on the board. I think we're, he's a good job.
Excellent, so you're seconding that? Is that correct?
John, John Unling.
Okay, perfect. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up is the planning commission. And there's a couple of planning commission options. We're going to start first with the planning commission member, which would be appointing somebody for a four-year term to expire on 12/31/25. Michelle Greenwell served in that role. Her term is up. There were several people who expressed some interest in that role. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Jennifer Taylor to the role of planning commission member. Is there a second, or does somebody else wish to nominate somebody else?
I'm comfortable with Michelle. I think she's been on the board, haven't heard anything in a negative way, so I agree. I don't know Jennifer Taylor, nor unless you want to have some input, background, or...
Sure. So Jennifer, she's been a 20-year resident. She put in volunteer application earlier this year. She's actually an engineer by trade, has spent 20 years in that particular role. I know her a little, ultimately. I haven't worked with her on any committees or different things. She was active with the school when her kids were sort of of school age, and she now has a little more time on her hands, so she had put in a volunteer application to get involved. She had expressed some interest in a variety of committees. That was one of them, I thought, her background, and she interviewed well, and I thought her background, it would be a nice addition to the planning commission. That was why I was thinking of her. But ultimately, I will defer to our third member to see if he has thoughts to either person or a third person, and we'll run from there.
Let's get Steve's in on that one.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll vote to reappoint Michelle Greenwald to the position.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Michelle Greenwald to the planning commission as a planning commission member. Is there any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've reappointed Michelle. Next up, this is not a requirement, but we do have the capability of appointing an alternate member to the planning commission. And just, so folks, so the board understands the mechanics. There's no requirement for us to appoint an alternate. If we chose to do, if we decided that was a good thing to do, we would make a motion tonight, but it would then be by resolution at our official business meeting. So ultimately, we wouldn't, there's sort of a two-step process to that. So the first question, I guess I would ask both of you to chime in on, is whether you have strong feelings one way or another, whether you feel we need to add an alternate member to that board.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's nice to have an alternate. In case someone leaves, there's someone there willing to fill in. Based on that, I'm willing to nominate Jennifer Taylor for that position.
Okay. Lou, do you have strong feelings one way or the other about an alternate?
I'm okay with the alternate, and I'm going to take you as your resume, guidance, and I'll second Jennifer Taylor.
Okay. I'm certainly comfortable with that. We have had some times where folks have jumped off that board, and it is nice. We're going to be having the, ultimately, they're going to be working on the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan goes to them next. So maybe having an extra set of eyes on that might be helpful in 2022 for sure. So, Tommy, so we've got a motion and a second. We still pass that motion, but then we'll do it by resolution at the January meeting, correct? Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. First, I'm going to say thanks, guys. That's always a choppy process, and I think we did that pretty good, so I'm happy with that. So next up, we go through, let me get back to my agenda here. Make sure we covered what we were supposed to. Excellent. So now, it's going to be the holiday and the meeting schedule, and we're going to have a series of motions to deal with sort of the mechanics of local government now. So holiday and meeting schedule, it's going to be a motion to set the holiday and meeting schedule for 2022, and it, Tommy, it largely mirrors the current schedule, correct? Other than some of the vacation, not vacation, the holiday dates and times, correct?
Correct, same as last year.
Yes, we need a motion.
I guess I'll make a motion that we include the schedules, holiday schedule, I through X. Want me to list all the names, or you just?
No, if you just make a motion, the enclosed holiday and meeting schedule as presented.
Holiday and meeting schedule as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have other establishments. That's going to be a motion to set township depositories, treasurer, assistant treasurer, bond amounts, vehicle reimbursement rate, and the newspaper of record. Tommy, could you maybe just give us a super-high-level overview of kind of these, just so folks understand what we're agreeing to and approving with this particular item?
The township is required to select banks into which our funds are deposited and managed. The township code requires bond for myself, and we do bond the treasurer and the assistant treasurer, so this sets that as well. We need to appoint a newspaper of record in which our legal ads are published, and also approve vehicle reimbursement rate for those employees who use their personal vehicle for township business. And traditionally, we have used the IRS reimbursement rate. There is also the group facility registration dates, which provide for a preferential registration period for township-based organizations and youth organizations.
Thank you, Tommy. I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
On this meeting schedule, correct?
On the other establishments.
On other establishments.
So this, this little, that's-
I got it, I got it. I just didn't know we were jumping ahead on that one. But I'll make a motion that we approve other establishments as so noted.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, next up, we have Resolution 2022-01, which is going to be a resolution to authorize certain activities conducted by the Warsester Township Volunteer Fire Department. As folks who have been to the meeting before, there's a series of items that we do for the Volunteer Fire Department each year, and we now sort of bundle those into a single motion to make it a little bit easier to sort of codify the mechanics of making sure that we're continuing to support the items that we've supported in the past for the fire department. So there are a few things, these are things like the fire department picnics, the annual 5K, when they were, you know, a couple, the past couple of years, that's been, I know, not run, but the hope is that that'll be back on track this year, and then some of the ladies auxiliary items, as well as some of the other things that they do. And we do that all as a single resolution. So does anybody want to make a motion on that particular item?
I'll make a motion, we accept 2022-01, resolution for activities for the Warsester Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have Resolution 2022-02, and this is a resolution to establish a fee schedule. And I am not, I'm not going to ask you to list every fee, Tommy, but if you could just sort of articulate the philosophy, how we set our fees, so that folks understand sort of how that rotates year to year.
State law does not permit a municipality to charge a fee that exceeds the estimated cost for processing the fee. The township, therefore, studies the estimated cost for each of the permits that we issue. And it has been the board policy for recent years to establish a reimbursement rate of approximately 95%. In short, to treat the fees as a user-based fee, so the person to whom the benefit of a permit earns is paying the majority of the cost to issue that permit. So each year, we take a look, and we update all of the information for our employees' rates and benefits, how much time they spend on particular permits, and we establish a fee that's approximately 95% reimbursement.
Thank you, Tom. And you actually, anecdotally, or in reality, you sent us a, there was a lawsuit for a township that had overcharged ultimately, and cost the township a significant amount of money because they had overcharged for a particular permit fee, I think it was. I don't remember the exact details of the case, but you had sent us a copy of that. So certainly, we want to recoup what we can, but not, you know, draw the line where it should be. And I think we've done a good job of that through the years, and certainly, I'll entertain a motion if somebody would like to make one on that.
Make a, make a motion, accept Resolution 2022-02 fee schedule.
As presented.
As presented.
Perfect.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up is Resolution 2022-03, which is a resolution to appoint the township auditor. We've had Bee Bergvoll for the last several years, for sure. That's ultimately who the motion would be to reappoint them, in essence, to that role. If anybody has any specific questions regarding that in terms of board members, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We, uh, accept Resolution 2022-03 as presented. Township auditor.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up is Resolution 2022-04, which is a resolution to establish the township manager's salary for 2022, and to approve the township manager employment agreement. Um, I will actually, I'll make this motion. Uh, I don't want to discuss personnel issues too deeply here, but I think you have the information in the packets. If somebody, I will make a motion to, um, a motion to establish the township manager's salary for 2022, and to approve the township manager employment agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion passes, two to one. Resolution 2022-05 is our next item, which is a resolution to authorize the destruction of certain public records in accordance with Act 428 and 1968 and the Municipal Records Manual. So Tommy, what is the actual policy that we're agreeing to in terms of our destruction of public records? Because I know folks always worry about destroying records.
Several years ago, the township adopted the state guidelines, which authorized municipalities the ability through resolution to destroy certain documents that have, uh, reached the maturity date. Uh, so in accordance with, uh, with that policy, each, uh, reorganization meeting, the township adopts a resolution that specifically identifies the records to be destroyed, uh, not only type of record, but, uh, the year, uh, of the record. Uh, the resolution before you is similar to what we have done, uh, in past years. What we do is change the date by one year, uh, at each reorganization meeting.
Thank you, Tommy. So at the end of the day, we're doing, we're following the rules with regarding what we destroy, and when we destroy it, and how we destroy it, which is always good, uh, and I will entertain a motion unless anybody else has additional questions on that item.
Make a motion that we accept Resolution 2022-05 as presented.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have Resolution 2022-06, which is a resolution to establish emergency services' response areas. Uh, this is a change, so Tommy, maybe you could just give us a little more information on this item.
Each reorganization meeting, the township appoints a, uh, fire company to service the, uh, municipality, and that is, uh, the Warrsester Volunteer, uh, Fire Department. And we do establish the, uh, ambulance zones in the township. And, uh, there are four ambulance companies that provide service, uh, for us throughout each week. The, uh, two maps before the board this evening are similar to that, which we considered and adopted last year with one change. There is an area that is presently serviced by Plymouth Ambulance, uh, that, uh, after review with the folks at, uh, Lower Providence Ambulance, it makes sense, uh, to transfer, uh, that, uh, portion of the township from Plymouth to Lower Providence. Uh, we reviewed the information, and, uh, it made sense in terms of better response time, uh, and the folks at the county 911 concurred, uh, in that finding. So before the board this evening is, uh, uh, the maps, uh, which reflect, uh, the service areas with that one revision.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on that, Mr. Ryan, do you have any feedback since we did that? What's been the result? Has the time been, uh, cut down?
So each, uh, each morning at about, uh, 2:00, I receive, uh, a list of the, uh, the calls in the township, and we review that each day, uh, and everything seems to be working fine. As you recall, we established a, a substation for skipback ambulance at Meadowwood, and, uh, yeah, we don't see any issues. So we do track it every day, and it seems to be working very well.
Okay, thank you.
Lou, any questions on this? This is, we did, we did it a few months ago, and it said an adjustment for additional...
I, I remember that, and I think we're on, on track.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion. We accept Resolution 2022-06, establish emergency service response areas as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have other business. Does anybody wish to bring any other business before the board tonight?
I do.
Okay.
Again, this is...
Go ahead.
My first year, and, uh, it's been an exciting year, and I'm, I'm just, again, I'm gonna reiterate this again. Uh, I believe we need a code of conduct for the township, for any employee, anybody, towards any supervisor, or any resident. I think we have to have a code of conduct. The second, uh, is, uh, the township manager's contract does not have an evaluation process, so we don't know, and I don't know, I would use say, I would assume Chair would be the one, uh, to evaluate, and then, again, present good, bad, and ugly. Let's go with that, and, uh, uh, there's been a number of complaints, and I think we need to address them, and I don't think just, uh, the code of conduct is really important.
Steve, you have any thoughts on that, and I'll, then I'll chime in, or vice versa?
No, I, I, Mr., Mr. Chairman, I think it's a personnel matter, and I think we can have a review sometime in an executive session with the township manager. So we're all three on the same page to discuss that. So I think sometime that if we, you can coordinate a meeting...
Sure.
Or if you want to do that, I, I think that's a way to resolve, at least air the, air the, let the air out of the ball, I guess, and try to move forward.
So, I'll say a couple of things. First off, I'm certainly supportive of, of doing, uh, of doing that, and, and because it's a personnel matter, obviously, we handle it, um, separately than a public meeting, and I think that's the right way to do that. Uh, ultimately, it's a collective decision, and I certainly support that piece of it, so I would say that would probably be the first step, and then we can also have some conversation. I don't want to make a quick decision on a, on a code of conduct conversation, and that's come up sometimes in the past, but certainly, um, you know, that's a discussion I think we can have as well, but, uh, certainly, I, I would be supportive of doing a review and handling that, uh, sort of offline with all three supervisors and the appropriate folks. So I'm certainly, um, fine with doing that.
I have one more comment here.
Sure.
And, and again, you get this, the second-class township code, and I read through it, and all, this contract that I got on Thursday, uh, it's, you can barely read the signatures, it doesn't matter, I guess. This is from 2014, 15, somewhere in there. Uh, it doesn't really, uh, express his duties. It's, it's a very vague contract, and, uh, it, this is a good contract for him, and it's not good for Warrsester. I mean, I think there has to be a, we have to reevaluate this, or this has to be adjusted, in my opinion. If, if you read this, uh, it's, it's, it's too vague.
I think the, the wording in the contract pretty much followed the past contracts that the township has done, and I think we followed suit the previous administration. It's not a lengthy contract, it's not really wordy, it's to the point, it specifies the, um, the contract to pay, what happens with the termination involved in there, and I, I guess, once again, we can consult our, uh, legal department, our solicitor, to find out if he can do a review and bring us another contract. But I think it was the wishes of the, the three or four or five times we've rehired managers, it's all pretty much been in the same format. So I, I think we've just followed that format. So I have no problems looking another format of a contract, and maybe through the meeting we have an executive session, um, some of these things can be hashed out, so...
Okay. Again...
You're accepting this contract as is, and I think it needs amended, but, uh, you know, you're, you're approving it, so, in my opinion, I think it needs amended, but you guys are already approved it, so...
Well, I, I, once again, go back to the contract. I, I'm just not sure it has served the township well in the past, I'm just not sure how we really deviate from it. I, I think there's always something left out in any contract. You would say, hey, we should have added that, we should have taken that out. I'm just not sure what else. It, it's pretty simple. Either he's doing a good job, or he's not doing a good job. If he's not doing a good job, we have the ability not to renew the contract. And once again, it's a contract we renew, and there is a termination clause in there that says, hey, we decide at any point to terminate it, there's a built-in factor of X amount of months that they get for that. So, once again, I, I think we have to agree that the township manager is not a contract that, it's like a professional sports contract, it goes from year to year, that something that, something happens, and I'm sure Mr. Ryan's well aware of that as well, that, uh, the township manager serves at the...
At the will of the board.
The will of the, will of the board. So at any time, that can, that, that can change. So it's not something we're voting on that, we're voting on what the past administrations have done over the years in Warrsester. It's been a, a one-page document. Um, it, as I said before, it lists his, his pay, uh, somewhat the duties, and, uh, the consequences if the board decides to, uh, terminate the contract. So I'm just not sure what else would be included in that...
Right.
From the personnel standpoint.
But again, certainly something that we can discuss, you know, it's, some of those items, I think Steve was saying, you might, we might need the solicitor's input in terms of that.
I would ask that we do that, and whether you define a job as a good job or a bad job, I mean, that's a vague statement also. I mean, I think there's criteria that a professional that does a certain way, and if you're unprofessional, then, then you're gonna say in your wording, that's not a good job.
Yeah.
So I presented my case, and, uh...
Yeah, once again, I, I, I think our solicitor has been involved in numerous townships. I, I haven't seen another township manager's contract, so I guess I'm speaking out of ignorance as that, as that's concerned, but I'm certainly willing to look at it and see if we're missing something there, and what needs to be changed or adjusted, or the wording involved in that. I, I think we've just followed in footsteps the previous administrations.
Right, it was certainly, it, we're in agreement, we're certainly taking the step of our sitting down and having a review and starting that piece of it for sure, and we'll make sure that we, we'll make, again, I, I'm trying to be a little bit careful there because it's a personnel matter, but we'll certainly, we're, we're not, not hearing you, but...
I, I, you've heard me for a number of months, so I'm just saying there's, there's a code of conduct should be established, and if you, and again, that, that contract's not, that's not good for Warrsester. So I'll leave it go with that. We're gonna, I'm...
Fair enough. I...
I, I think we all agree. I mean...
Right, I, I don't want to beat it too far to the ground.
Yeah, beat a dead horse, right.
I think we're, we've, we're in agreement on some of those pieces, and we'll take the next steps that we need to. Does anybody else have any other, other business? You've got, had your stuff. Do you have anything, Steve, you want to bring up for tonight?
No, I think it's, I, I think the conversation's healthy. I, I think rather than having things get out of hand, and I, I think we can all sit down...
Sure.
And come up with some ideas and move forward, rather than it being a, a problem that holds us back as a board working together. So I, I think it's a, a good conversation to have.
No, look, this is, this is my fourth reorganization meeting, first off, and I don't want to, I don't want to jinx myself at all, but the first year was four hours, you know, and I didn't handle that meeting particularly well, that it went four hours. Um, but we're, we're, we're now, we're at a more manageable amount, but it, what you, you see is sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't agree. It's really not personal, you know, but we try to just soldier through some of the things, but we saw, you know, with appointments, you know, we had different people, we agreed on different things, and that's okay. I mean, it's not, you know, but...
I just would remember that we all three work for the people that elected us. So if they have a voice and they speak to us, I think we need to listen to the people. So, that being said, uh, just remember that, we work for the people, and they pay us. That's, I'm gonna leave that go.
All right, and we're gonna, we're gonna leave on that item. Anything else? If nothing else, then we have, do you have a public comment there, Art, you want to make?
One question.
I, if you could come, I know, I gotta make you do it, Art. Twelve years, you made us all come to the... And where are you from again? Are you saying that he didn't approve the meeting schedule in conjunction with that? The motion... It's a...
Correct me if you will.
Well, he made the motion, we need to tweak that at all, Tommy? The motion... Yep. I think that's what he said, but he might have referenced, I think we get the motion right, but not necessarily all the exhibits. I'm with you. I, believe me, that's, that's a truly thankless role, so we appreciate it as well.
I'm glad you and Mark worked it out.
That's you and me both. So, we're good? Motion to adjourn.